No, no, we're fine.
I brought smarties to it.
Yes, the bowl's in the video. Thank you very much.
There you go.
So you see me sneaking a lot to it.
Good. You got anything under control?
No. No, no, no.
I'm fine. How are you? How are you? I printed those. I think I know your email. Thank you. It was nice of you to email me. Thank you.
Email busy.
Chuck Redpath is not feeling well.
Yeah, I'm fine also, too. Or if it's here.
Turner earlier.
Chair, we call the October 6, 2020 meeting with City Council Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Will do.
Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulginsy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
We have two presentations. The first is Baker Tilly for Chow and Kraus for the audit. Hello.
Can you hear me or do you need my mask off?
I think it's fine.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Joe Lightcap. I'm a partner with Baker Tilly. We performed your comprehensive annual financial audit this year. First off, I'd like to publicly thank Office of Budget Management and CWLP for their help. We did the audit remote this year with the stay-at-home order. And it went very well. There wasn't much of a disruption from our perspective on how the city is always very well-prepared, very ready for us, and provides us all the information that we ask for, which can be a lot. I have two reports that I'll go over today, the audit of financial statements of the CAFR and the reporting and insights letter. I'll be presenting both at a high level, so if you have any questions, if you've already had a chance to look at the documents, feel free to stop me at any time. I'm going to start off with the larger document, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which, as the name suggests, is a more comprehensive set of financial statements for your review and will be reviewed by the Government Finance Officers Association for consideration in being awarded the Certificate of Achievement and for excellence in financial reporting. The city has also prepared the CAFR themselves this year instead of having us assisting with the pieces with some pieces of it. They've always done more than most municipalities, but in this case, they prepared the entire document, which is especially rare in the government space. I'm going to start off on page one, which is the independent auditor's report. This is our report on the document. We once again issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. It's the highest level of assurance you can gain from outside auditors and states that everything's reasonable in all material respects and can be reasonably relied upon by an outside user of the financial statements. On page two of our report is an Emphasis of a Matter paragraph. What this says is that the city adopted GASB statement 84 this year, which moved some previously reported fiduciary assets and liabilities onto the general fund. It was an immaterial adoption of a standard, but it's reflected here and would look different if you were to compare the CAFR to last year. What I'd like to point out to my boards that I present at, first and foremost, is the management's discussion and analysis. This is a very high-level overview of what happened with the city's operations and various funds compared to the prior year. If you want to know at a high level what happened, why it happened, this is where I would go. I'm going to skip over that. It's very, very easy and very, very easy to read and very good information. I'm going to go to statement one and two, which is the full accrual statements of the city. This is kind of the only place you'd really see this on an annual basis. It's all of the funds and all of the assets and liabilities of the city reported in one spot. So all your capital assets and all your long-term debt. On page seven, net position decreased in the governmental activities by a little under 400,000 and increased in the business-type activities by about 15.6 million. Statements three and five, these are maybe a little more familiar, fund-level statements. These are presented on more of a short-term focus, which we call the Modified Accrual Basis of Accounting. On page 10, you can see the fund balances of all the governmental funds went up about 8.5 million, with the general fund up about 7.2. Capital improvements fund down about 2.8 with the planned spend down of fund balance on capital projects. Now, there's, I went over one where the governmental activities net position decreased by about 400,000 and on the long-term perspective, on the short-term perspective, it increased by about 8.5 million. Page or Statement Six gives you a good idea of why, what are the differences in the two bases of accounting, to kind of help you under bridge the gap in that understanding. Following these basic financial statements are the financial statements of the proprietary funds, the electric, light, and power, water, sewer, and motor vehicle, and the Oprah Cemetery, all combined. Following those statements, there's a bunch of good detail in the notes to the financial statements gives you some policies of the city, financial policies of the city, as well as why some of the balances increased or decreased over the years. After that is some long-term, some trend information on your pension and OPEV information, budgetary schedules, as well as the statistical section, which gives you 10-year trend information on your financial statements, so you can go back and see how things have changed over the last 10 years. With that, those are my kind of prepared remarks on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Unless there's any questions, I'll move on to the audit results letter.
Any questions? Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so the reporting and insight letter, this is our summary of the, how the audit went from a non-financial highlights and position. We've presented a similar letter in the past. This is kind of a rebranded version of that. So it's got all the same information that you've seen from us in the past, just in a slightly different, probably more easily-to-read format. What I would, I would say about this letter is it's pretty boilerplate, which in your case is a good thing. There's no exceptions or difficulties performing the audit, anything of a negative disclosure in that regard. What the report does do is it addresses our responsibilities, management's responsibilities, that there were no significant changes in the audit plan, so the plan of the audit, we didn't have to change because of anything that we found during the audit. Our thoughts on any significant risks of material misstatement, which for the city is none outside of the standard, audit standards that require us to look at certain things and consider them significant. Outside of that, there was nothing of large concern in terms of how we planned our audit. There's a report on internal control-related matters, so when we come out to do the audit, we look at internal controls over financial reporting to plan our tests. Not to provide an opinion on internal control, but if there was something that we felt that council needed to know, it would be in that letter, similar to prior years. The city has very good internal controls in place over financial reporting, and we have nothing to report. The final piece of the letter, it's kind of a two-way communication. While we work with management to perform the audit, we ultimately work for council. So if you ever have any questions or concerns about our audit, or, you know, things that you'd like to look at or ideas to bounce off of us, we're available to you at any time. The intro paragraph, the intro page executive summary on this report has my email and my phone number if you should need to contact me. With that, that's my presentation on the audit for 2020.
Great. Any questions? If you could get a copy or get to Director McCarty, and that way you can get it to the clerk for posting, we'd appreciate it.
Yep, sir.
We appreciate your great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's nice to have news.
What's that?
I said it's nice to have good news. Good news. It's nice to have good news.
Yep, that is good news.
Well, hey, Mr. Mayor, I hate to break the good news, but the, as far as our police and fire pension funds, the total debt in the most recent period reported on page 102 and 103 of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report shows an increase in the debt load by $44 million. Police grew from 169 million to 207 million, 169 to 207 million, and the fire grew from 185 million to 191 million. That's all. Thank you.
Yep, thank you for making that note, and that's one of the things we've talked to the legislature about, Illinois Municipal League as well, the importance, not only for Springfield, but other municipalities to move the ramp out, just like we refinance our mortgage in times of difficulties. This would be no different. It'd be an opportune time to do that. We'd still retain our obligation, but moving it out to 2050 would match us up to other retirement funds throughout the state, but also provide relief so we can eat into the unfunded liability better than what's occurring right now. Any other questions or comments? Next is Inspector General Report.
Thank you very much. I promise to be brief this evening. Have not seen you for a while with the virus and all of the lockdown. I have five brief reports to share with you this evening, and you should all have a copy of 2020 OIG-1. Early this year, I was contacted by an anonymous email complainant concerning a retired CWLP employee, an allegation that the employee was manipulating the electric meter on his house to minimize a bill. I was only provided with an address, but through tax records, I found the owner's name. Met with CWLP management, who is aware in the past that this had been accomplished by some former employees. So to track this down, CWLP placed a separate meter on the power pole adjacent to respondent's home to independently monitor electrical usage. CWLP engineers explained to me how you can somehow wire your house. I didn't understand it, and if I did, I wouldn't put it in a public report to educate people how to do that. But the bottom line is, this meter was up for a number of months, hence me reporting later in the year, and there was not a significant enough differential compared to prior usage, compared to the actual usage measured at the pole to prove that there had been under-reporting. Just as a, maybe a moment of public instruction, had I found a significant differential, my procedure would be to turn it over to the Sangamon County State's Attorney for Theft of Services prosecution. That, of course, would have to be done beyond a reasonable doubt, a level of proof, and the data that was collected simply didn't rise to that level. Accordingly, that matter is closed. 2020 OIG-2. In February of 2020, I was visited by two agents from the U.S. Department of Treasury, Office of Special Inspector General for the Troubled Asset Relief Program. They contacted me because of my previous report to this body regarding Enos Park TIF issues in December of 2016. The investigators were concerned about payments made in the city of Springfield in 2015 and 16 from a fund called the Hardest Hit Fund. $300,000 has been spent in Springfield for demolition of blighted properties. The question that they asked is why would Enos Park Development borrow money to purchase blighted properties and then seek funding to have them torn down? And in the report, there's four addresses that specifically they were interested in. The only insight that I could share with them was during my investigation, and please recall that that investigation was over self-dealing by officers of Enos Park Development, and there was no finding of any self-dealing there. But I did observe the business model where Enos Park would buy from blighted properties from landlords at market price to keep them out of the hands of other landlords who might neglect them, hence the payment of market value, while the investigator said most places they acquire the property for free. The investigators indicated that they had no objection to me disclosing that they'd met with me, and I've never heard from them again, and therefore my file is closed. 2020 OIG-6. I was contacted by a complainant who frequently appears during the public comment section at the end of each city council meeting. Complainant stated that she felt that she was treated rudely by Alderman Hanauer and sent me four video links to meetings, which I asked if there were others, and that was all that she would provide. I reviewed each of the videos, and both complainant and the alderman were somewhat somewhat argumentative at times. On one occasion where the alderman chaired the committee of the whole, complainant was admonished for exceeding the five-minute time limit on public comment. Basically, while the exchanges were not overly friendly, I would not characterize them as rude or hostile. Therefore, no follow-up action is called for. This is one of two reports tonight that I'll make about people who complained about the public comment period. And I guess just to the entire council, I would make just a very brief observation. This is the citizen's opportunity to address you. This is the city's opportunities. On occasion, very significant topics have come forward and been advanced to the council. And also, we acknowledge that at times you may be addressed on a range of unusual topics. The difficulty is that these discussions come at the end of your very long and often tedious meetings, at a time when patience may be at a premium. And I realize that situation, and just encourage, encourage you to enforce your rules and time limits and encourage you to acknowledge that people do want to participate in their city government. But again, no, no finding, no recommendation, other than a general observation to all of you. Which leads to 2020 OIG-10. The matter was opened following a citizen's complaint that he was treated offensively by Alderman Turner. When he spoke during the public comment period at the end of a council meeting, the complainant addressed the city and chastised this council for holding a public discussion criticizing a comment made at a council meeting by another alderman. Complainant stated, in his opinion, such arguments shouldn't occur during the public portion of the meeting, but should be done in executive session. When the complainant was finished speaking, Alderman Turner commented that conducting such discussions would violate the Opens Meetings Act. And she also pointed out that the complainant had previously himself acted inappropriately when he called her an offensive name, which appears in the report. Complainant stated to me that he did not use that word that night, nor any time in the past. I reached out to Alderman Turner, who recalled those incidents, including when the complainant addressed her with a racially insensitive reference, also including the vulgar term. Alderman Turner stated that thereafter, Springfield Police Department escorted her to her car after a council meeting for a number of weeks, and that the complainant later apologized to her. Therefore, Alderman Turner's observation of the irony of the complainant admonishing the city council to behave better, or Alderman Turner's observation was appropriate. File is closed as unfounded with no further action. Finally, 2020 OIG-12. I was contacted by multiple parties immediately following the September 8, 2020, council meeting regarding a topic brought up by Alderman DeSenzo. Alderman asked if there were permits required to stage a boat parade on Lake Springfield. Appears that a presidential candidate's supporters had boat parades across the country, and one occurred at Lake Springfield. A discussion ensued, and Corporation Council indicated that that was a political gathering, and free speech considerations had to be acknowledged, that there was no permitting process. And I believe it was the mayor who opined that there are also a string of boats at the annual blessing of the boats at Lake Springfield. All of the complainants who contacted me felt that the alderman's comment was politically motivated and that it was an attempt to curtail the exercise of political free speech. Because no particular candidate's names were mentioned by any of the participants in the council's discussion, I do not feel that any line was crossed by the alderman and no sanction is warranted. Accordingly, this file is closed with no action or recommendation. Those are my reports. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Judge.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the September 15, 2020, city council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, I'll entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading ordinances in the record of this city council meeting.
So, second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda to the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Alderwoman Turner.
It was my understanding that last week, the motion and vote for 2023-56 was consent.
It was.
That's correct.
Yes, yes.
366.
356.
Okay. Any other discussion? No, just be moved back to committee, or to consent, council?
I'm sorry, is it listed currently on debate?
Yes.
If the vote, honestly, I can't recall if the vote of the committee was to place it on consent.
It was. It was.
Then it should be on consent. So we can correct the, we can correct this by simply including it with a motion. However, first you have to approve the pre-council reading of all the consent agenda now.
Okay.
Then when it comes to vote, we can add that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
So all in favor of moving the consent agenda to the record of this city council meeting? Any other discussion? All say aye.
Aye.
Post?
365 to 372.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Now, it would be appropriate if you make a motion to include, to correct the record, to approve, or to include 356.
Okay, I make a motion that the record reflect that 2023-56 should be included on the consent agenda. Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Motion carries. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor of the consent agenda, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open, which includes 2020-356.
Can we just vote on the computer now?
Yeah.
Can we? I'll go ahead and make the voice call vote.
Is everybody here?
All right. Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulginsy.
Yes, except for 356 to 35, or 35, what is it?
375. 372?
Yep.
Yeah.
Noted.
355.
Did you want to vote on 356, Alderman?
Yes. No, excuse me, that was all the ones dealing with liquor. 365 to 372.
Noted. As a president. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley. Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Eight ayes, with the exception of President for 365, 372 for Alderman Fulginsy.
Okay, thank you.
Zero noes.
Agenda number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-430, 2020-049, 2020-067, 2020-153, 2020-207, 2020-273, 2020-289, 2020-315, 2020-330, 2020-331, 2020-332, 2020-333, 2020-346, 2020-363, 2020-378, 2020-379, 2020-380, 2020-382, 2020-383, and 2020-384 remain tabled or in committee. Is there any motion on any of those? Next item on the agenda is 2020-314, North Ordinance Authorizing Inner Governmental Cooperation Agreement with Sangamon County Illinois Board of Health for Animal Control Services within the city of Springfield, limits and authorizing the payment in an amount not to exceed $303,289.24 for March 1, 2020 through February 28, 2021 for the Office of Budget Management.
Mayor.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion to send this back to committee.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We send it back to committee.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
It's my understanding that the county didn't get the information until later today, and I will say that we do need to act on this fairly soon. So my intent is no more delays. So if there's any other conversation with the county, we need to do it sooner than later. There, we're already three-quarters of the way through the year. They're doing the work. And so we need to finish this.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2020-352, an ordinance approving professional services agreement with Hanson Professional Services, Inc., in amount not to exceed $620,605 for engineering services for the design and construction of the dominant wastewater treatment systems using the environmental and regulatory initiatives and rebate fund for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair, I'll entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-352 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Oh, is it up? Can you vote?
Can we vote?
Can they vote?
Well, it was last time. Getting me now.
It's not on the side, but you could vote. Why don't we try? Go ahead and cast your vote.
Well, it's not.
Can't, now it's not.
It's not, the red button.
Okay, roll call vote.
Okay. Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulginsy.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman De Senzo.
Present.
Noted. Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number 2020-358, An Ordinance Authorizing Contract with Luanne Hickman for the purchase of real estate located at 1921 East South Grand Avenue, amount of $51,000 and closing cost in the amount of $1,500, and for a total amount not to exceed $52,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, early acquisition for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-358 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved in second. Any discussion?
Good discussion, Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
What I like about this ordinance is that it's related to improving one of our gateways into the city, South Grand. We need to beautify and improve our gateways with infrastructure and so forth. I think there's a problem, however, with the timing of this ordinance, both in a short-term sense and in a long-term sense. This ordinance has to do with some real estate on the north side of South Grand, and a month ago, we had four early acquisition ordinances for four different properties on the south side of South Grand, which are in Ward 2. This one here tonight is in Ward 3. And a month ago, we, as a council, decided to hold off on the four ordinances in Ward 2, and I thought the rationale was in part because we've got all these situations in Ward 6 having to do with railroad relocation, and the need to resolve those issues. Those folks over there are dealing with actual construction, actual damage, actual disruption, and this situation here on South Grand has to do with a bridge that may not be built for 10 years, and maybe, hopefully it'll be built at that point in time. But we've got four major bridge projects before this one, and then we added two more just in the last two months. We're going to do upgrades to the bridge at 9th and South Grand, and that bridge already exists, and we've got some good funding for that, and then I think it's at Ash, or excuse me, at Cookin and 9th Street. We're going to upgrade that bridge, which are all good. I think we've got to be careful on going into this early acquisition, because we've got more properties that could fall into early acquisition. We've got to be careful about not bringing real estate to the city where the city becomes obligated for the real estate. That means we've got to, we lose the real estate, because now the city owns the property. Now we've got to probably tear down the structure, which is additional cost to the city. We've got to start mowing it, and so we've got all these new costs besides the acquisition cost. Now, this particular property here that we got here tonight, it's really two ordinances. The one ordinance is for the purchase of the real estate for, I'm going to round off the numbers, $50,000. I looked at the, what the tax assessor shows the value at, and it was at $30,000 of fair market value. So we're buying a piece of property that's, the assessor's had it continually at roughly $30,000, and this was originally a Habitat for Humanity property. It was upgraded, and then the owner was able to purchase it at a very favorable cost basis. And what's also interesting about this property is that it's been set at a fair market value at $50,000 instead of $30,000, but it's also fire damaged. The rear of the property is, the siding is off of it. It's, other parts of the siding is wilted away. It's deformed. Now, railroad relocation didn't cause that problem. The railroads didn't cause that problem. So I'm concerned about paying top dollar for a damaged piece of property, even if it is to be demolished. So those are the concerns. I think if we held the four ordinances a month ago, they're on the south side of South Grand, in committee, we ought to do the same for this one, and just hold off, and let's see where we're going with this early acquisition. We've got a lot of property acquisition going forward, and we want to make sure we've got enough money for those property acquisitions. I think we've all been very upset by the homeowners that have come to us from Ward 6 in the area of 5th and 6th, 4th, 5th and 6th Streets, where they're being impacted by actual construction here and now, and some very upsetting stories about the way there have been, those situations have been handled. So I think we should hold off on these additional purchases. By the way, these purchases tonight, it's using motor fuel tax money, motor fuel tax money. That's revenue sharing from the state of Illinois to the city. We've got lots of other uses for that property. I didn't see anything in our budget that allocated money to 19th Street bridges. I asked our city council coordinator to look through the staff notes that accompanied the decision to appropriate motor fuel funds for bridges. I didn't see any staff notes that talked about the bridge at 19th Street. So just in summary, recall now that 19th Street doesn't have anything to do with railroad relocation. It has to do with railroad improvement, and we all want railroad improvement. But we're committed now to moving the Union Pacific freight that's on 2nd Street over to, we call it 9th Street, because that's what it's at in downtown Springfield, to the Norfolk and Southern tracks. The 19th Street tracks are the Canadian Railroad. That freight is going to stay on 19th. We're not talking about trying to move that freight to some other rail line. So I think we're best, I'd like to vote yes on this ordinance down the road after we look at it more carefully, but I think we ought to take care of our homeowners that are being impacted right now with construction activity for bridges that are being built right here and now. And then let's come back to this one later on and take another look at it, and hopefully we can find a way to say yes to this one. I understand the woman's got a hardship. She's 62 years old, and they did build a ramp for her in, to the rear of her building. Habitat for Humanity did that, and she, from what I understand, she's not wheelchair-dependent now, but she anticipates, anticipates being in that way down the road. Now, let's just look at the financing for this property. The one we got tonight, it's $50,000 for us to purchase the property, and then it's roughly $130,000 to relocate this woman, which involves purchasing the property, I think it's in the documentation, for $87,000, and then making some AD accommodations of another $30,000. So it all adds up to about $180,000 to relocate someone in a home that's assessed at $30,000 by the tax assessor for a bridge construction that might not take place for 10 years. So I just think this is premature right tonight. We've got to take care of Ward, the relocation's taking place on 5th and 6th Street, and then come back to this one. So my request would be that the council hold this until we look at it a little bit more in depth. Thank you.
Alderwoman Turner.
I do not disagree with Alderman McMenamin that we do most definitely have to take care of those homeowners that are impacted right now by the construction that's going on. I think that everyone shares that concern, and everyone wants to work very expeditiously to make that happen. However, to make that happen, it would rely on an expenditure of funds in a different category than what these funds are coming from. It's two different, two different buckets of money that we would be spending to accommodate those homeowners that I think should be accommodated very quickly. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, is that I disagree with Alderman McMenamin when he says that the 19th Street is not part of the railroad relocation. As I stated last week, it is most definitely part and parcel of the railroad relocation. From the very beginning, it has been, the 19th Street Rail has been part of that railroad relocation conversation, and everything that has happened from start to right now. So it is part of the railroad relocation project. I did vote to put those four properties back in committee, and it's apples and oranges. It's two totally different things. The four properties that we put back in committee were properties that were vacant, dilapidated houses that no one, they were not occupied, and no one will ever be able to occupy them because they're not in a position for occupancy. So that was the main reason why those properties were put back in committee. This is a different situation, and I think that as we move forward, I would ask that the council vote favorably to, on 2020-358 and 2020-359.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Alderman McMenamin.
The motor fuel tax funds that we would use for this ordinance tonight involving 1921 South Grand East are precisely the kinds of funds that could be made available for the property owners on 4th, 5th and 6th Streets, number one. Number two, this is not a freight relocation issue. This is a railroad improvement issue. There's a difference, and the, all the information we get from Hanson Engineers makes that distinction. We've got railroad relocation projects taking place, and then we've got railroad improvement projects, and this is an improvement project. It has nothing to do with relocating freight from 9th Street to, excuse me, from 3rd Street to 9th Street, which is a top, top-level priority for our downtown, for the survival and long-term benefit of our downtown. So I think we've got to stay focused on our number-one priority, which is relocation projects, and then move beyond that down the road to the railroad improvement projects.
Yep. Alderman Hanauer, then Alderwoman Turner, and then Gregory, then I'd ask Seth Warren from, I'm sorry, not Seth, Steve Warren, come up from Hanson.
My take on this is, look, I understand, you know, Alderman, where you're coming from on this, but we have, we have to juggle a lot of balls in the air, and a lot of projects. We don't wait till one project is done to start another. My understanding is, is we are moving forward with the, with the work to try to mitigate the situations over on, from the people in Ward 6. So we're working on that. We've got the railroad relocation project, and then we got this one. We've got to juggle these. We can't, we would go nowhere as a city if we just do one project at a time. Just think of the amount of, I mean, be a lot easier on Nate, when he just did one project at a time, but, you know, he probably has, you know, 100 projects going at one time just to enroll improvements in the city. So I think we need to move forward. The costs of these are not going to get cheaper. Costs of houses don't get cheap, very rarely get cheaper. They get, they go, they get higher. And so I'm with you, Alderwoman Turner. I think that we need to move forward.
Alderwoman Turner.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Hanauer. I would, to go back to the statement that I made with regard to the difference between the funding, there's a clear difference between the funding on those two different properties, because we are trying to identify funding for the Ward 6 properties, because it is not reimbursable from this fund. That's, that's the difference. This money is reimbursable from this fund. That's the clear difference. The other, the other thing that with regard to what was said, making the difference between railroad relocation and railroad improvement, I go back to, the only reason that we are currently involved in railroad relocation is because the 19th Street Railway was included in the project in order to get the Record of Decision. So if we had not included that 19th Street corridor, I would tell you, we would not be where we are right now. And so I restate, as someone that has been integrally involved in this project from day one, that it is part of railroad relocation, because we would not have a Record of Decision to move forward had it not been included. So I think that Alderman Hanauer is right. We do multiple things at one time, and I think that moving forward with this purchase is the right thing to do.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Since coming on to council, I've, you know, when I met with the good gentleman from Hanson, I've always been made aware that the 19th Street improvement was a sure thing, and something that is not just making, you know, our community feel good. I always thank you for, when you debate these things. You go into a long history, and I appreciate that it brings me up to speed. But I do look at all of these, I understand the difference between railroad relocation and railroad improvement, but for the normal guys and girls out there, it is improvement throughout that whole 11th Street, even though trains are moving, and just a normal person is looking at that as a beautiful sight from what we used to be able to look at. And we want to see those same things down the 19th Street track, whether a new train is coming, Thomas the Train is going to be on it, whoever. We just want to see improvement, just like it is on 11th Street. And I've talked to this gentleman, I've talked to Mr. Mung, and they all have assured us, assured me, that that's a real thing, and it's not smoke and mirrors, and to get one thing. And, you know, I think it's part of our job as a city council and the mayor, and, you know, on up to our state and federal officials, to make sure that we get those things done, that we don't leave the 19th Street track out, and that part of the east side out. And, you know, I have high confidence in that. As Alderwoman Turner said, these are two different situations. We talked at length about them. We actually talked about them again yesterday, so that we're clear on where we're at, and I'm definitely comfortable with moving forward with this, and I ask the council to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you'd like to come up? Alderwoman De Senzo.
I'll be very brief. Thank you, Mayor. I will not be voting for any additional acquisitions for anything until the citizens of Ward 6 are taken care of. I think we heard our first person come up here five to six weeks ago, and I know some things are moving, but until the people are taken care of, that need to be taken care of, the homeowners that are in occupied homes, whose homes have been damaged, whose lives have been disrupted, I am not voting for any new acquisitions, period. And I have discussed that with my colleagues, and I know you understand where I'm coming from, and I know you understand my frustration, and how disappointed I am in how the city has treated the people of Ward 6.
Steve?
Just briefly, I want to agree with Ms. Turner on funding for the hardships and the ones on 19th Street, the 19th Street corridor. Funding is the same for those as it is for usable segment 3, 4, 5, 6, all the rest of the properties. It's, the state approved that funding, so it's no different. We can purchase any of those properties along the 19th Street corridor. We've only chosen to purchase the hardship ones in order to save money and to concentrate on the usable segments that are being, you know, that are, that we have construction funds for right now.
Any questions? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance? Want to do a roll call, or can they?
We're going to try the voting.
Try the voting.
All right.
Vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes seven voting yes, two voting no, none voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2020-359, An Ordinance Authorizing Relocation Expenses in the Amount of $135,190 for the relocation of the personal property located in parcel SR 0230, located at 1921 South Grand Avenue East, relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, early acquisition for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2020-359 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes seven voting yes, two voting no, and none voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2020-373, a resolution granting a waiver of the residency requirement pursuant to Chapter 36, Section 36.05E of the City of Springfield Code of Ordinances. Chairwoman, entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-373 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We did have Gene Mitchell, I think, if he's here, signed up to speak.
He's still home.
Not here.
Okay. One clarification, make sure it's in the minutes. I am not a sponsor on this, so it's put on there inadvertently, but it's per the city code that this is moving forward. Isn't that correct, councilman?
Excuse me. Yes, we did attach it, for everybody's benefit, we did attach a section of the city code that sets out, you may recall, when the residency provisions were adopted, there was a provision for hardship. And so the attached code, in case anybody had a question on the language, it's attached there too. And anyone may, any employee may request the council to grant a waiver, which is what this is. It's kind of like an appeal from a zoning case or something like that. It comes to the council upon request.
Any other discussion?
Just a point of clarification.
Alderman McMinister?
This question is addressed to our city attorney. Does our code require extreme hardship for us to approve this request? Not just regular hardship, but extreme hardship?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And the council is the sole judge of that, what would constitute an extreme hardship.
Any other discussion? Alderman Hanauer?
So is this, how long is this request for? Is this for ever, or is it just, I'm trying to look back and?
You could give a recap of the, for the?
I apologize. I thought I knew it.
It's a permanent waiver of the residency requirement.
It's a permanent? However, the, it is a permanent waiver. However, when the waiver is granted, then each year, the individual must continue to present documentation that the hardship continues. And if you recall that, there's been, my memory is that there was one other case of hardship involving a circumstance with a police officer and relating to military service, and then a, I think, a family farm that was outside the corporate limits of the city. So this would be the second instance of the, this discussion coming forward.
And if you could recap the situation, I think the person was hired in 2016? And they're married, they kept their previous residence outside the city, is that correct?
Uh huh. That is, I was going to say, that is my understanding. There is attached a, excuse me, I'm sorry. There is attached a letter from the employee that outlines the basis of the request. However, it is, again, at the discretion of the city council to make it determine whether or not it meets the provisions of the ordinance.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the request, ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, one voting no, none voting present. Next item on the agenda is ordinance appointing, ordinance Agenda number 2020-374, an ordinance appointing Mike Canny to the Deferred Compensation Committee. Chairwoman, entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-374 on final passage.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes eight voting yes, none voting no, none voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2020-375, an ordinance appointing Ryan Maddox to the Deferred Compensation Committee. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-375 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Sorry, Alderwoman Turner.
Can we do an ominous vote for all of these?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to do an ominous vote for items 2020-375 through 2020-?
381.
377, oh, we have to?
381.
There is, there is an amendment for 377, so.
So through 381, with the exception of 2020-377.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
And seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda number 2020-376, an ordinance appointing Michael Allwood to the Deferred Compensation 2020-381, an ordinance appointing Kenneth Wislow to the Deferred Compensation Committee. Chair will entertain a motion to approve Agenda number 2020-375, 2020-376, and 2020-381 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes nine voting yes, none voting no, none voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2020-377, an ordinance appointing Nicole Cunningham to the Deferred Compensation Committee. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-377 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. The chair will entertain a motion to amend Agenda number 2020-377.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Council, you want to go over the amendment?
You may recall that the council had adopted a new deferred compensation committee that provided for representation from various collective bargaining units. This particular ordinance is the representative delegate for the Ask Me by agreement of, you know, all of the parties. There has been a change to the delegate, designated delegate, and the amendment simply substitutes the existing name with a new name that was provided by the collective bargaining unit, and it's all by agreement.
And that person is John Self?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So is there a motion for the amendment of John Self? Been moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All those in favor of the motion as amended, vote yes, or is there any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance as amended passes nine voting yes, none voting no, none voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2020-, or that is it? Very good. Is there any unfinished business coming before the city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to know if we could have an update on, we discussed last week in committee, 2020 Agenda items, number 2020, 382 and 383 related to the health insurance program, and we were waiting for some answers. Where do we have those?
I'm not sure if Jim Kuzner is direct.
I know we did get an email today as well that showed that city staff reached out to each one of the entities that had question, had a question last week.
Yeah, both the, both Memorial Health Services, Springfield Clinic were notified of the proposal. Neither one had submitted a proposal. There were discussions with regards to the model, because how it works now, and Mike Allwood could come up here and speak to it, but it's a all-in-one service provided by HSHS. So I did ask if they looked at other models and through the RFP process, and they had not, I do not believe. So, but he can give an overview of where things stand with regards to that.
Hello, Mike Allwood, IBW rep on the insurance committee, electric department employee. We did the RFP process. We opened it up pretty broadly as far as the way people wanted to bring ideas into it, but as far as other models, I'm not quite sure, because we left it pretty broad as far as, and the responses we got, the seven responses we got were very, many of them were very different. Many of them were way more robust, they included primary care physicians, they included x-ray services. All of these robust services came with a very robust price. So we ended up going through, sticking with the model that we have. The model that we have is working exceptionally well. Our numbers show that our members are getting healthier year over year. The compliance is going up. We did, in this new model, add the chronic care management, which is now mandated by law to be covered at 100%. It's considered a part of wellness now. That changed early last year, I believe. So we included that in the model because you have to include all wellness. So we're adding that to this year's package and program. And a big part of wellness is engaging your people. So when you look at this, when you look at any of your healthcare issues, one of the things you have to judge a little bit of weight to is disruption. You know, we're now a few years into this. Our employees love it. They are utilizing it. It's making a difference in the health of our plan, and that's reflected in our annual renewals, you know? Any of you that were around back, I believe it's 2010, when they did the projection for the city's health plan, by 2020, we were projected to be over $50 million a year. We're nowhere near that. And it's because the committee looks at everything. We go best in class for every service we provide. Our PBM, our medical medication provider, has programs that are just, nobody else is doing it, and it's saving us money. It has killed the specialty drug spend for our plan. Everybody else out there, it's a majority of their spend. It's a little bitty fraction of our spend. We went out for TPA again. Our current provider ended up being the provider of choice, because costs were better, they came back. It was competitive, everyone was close, pretty much the same service. And wellness was kind of the same way. It was competitive, there were a lot of close offers. Like I said, we had companies from Wisconsin, Tennessee, Arizona. Our only local vendor that submitted was St. John's, HSHS Leadwell. So the committee, after a lot of deliberation, and it was a close decision, chose to stay with HSHS. When you have a wellness program, it starts at ground zero. And then you build trust with your employees, you build relationships with your employees, and you engage them. If you start over with something different, you go back to ground zero. Now you got to convince the employees that this is a good thing to, try this, and move forward with it. And you keep doing that, people will just stop engaging altogether. You know, like I said last time, I was in front of you guys, when we came and tried to do the one-year extension, do you guys want to change your doctor every year? Do you want to say, okay? You want me to come to you and say, hey, we're not doing this anymore, we're doing something different. So now you got to pick a new doctor, you can't go here anymore, now you got to go there. Now, if the price, if they were out of the range on the price, if they were more expensive, then we take the fiduciary responsibility of this very seriously. And like I said, I think our numbers speak for themselves. When the rest of the nation's been 12, 17, 18%, we've been 0, 1, 2, 3 for years. We come in at or under budget every year. We manage this plan, I mean, we take it very seriously. And we take the RFPs very seriously. That's how we do it. The only reason we're where we are today is because this committee takes these RFPs very seriously. And you can, if you want to call up the vendor partners and ask them, we literally beat these guys up in the interviews. And we tell them that this isn't your best offer. You come back with a better offer, and they do. And we keep beating them down till we literally have the best deal out there.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate the work that you guys do. It's not, anytime you're in a RFP committee, it's not, it's not fun. It's not something, you have a hard time getting people to volunteer for. But I guess my two concerns I have is, you know, when you have two large companies in town that, for the second time, has not bid on it, it kind of concerns me. Because you can write a RFP, as you know, you can write an RFP to, you know, kind of exclude people. I'm not saying you did that, but it just, where my red flags were, the same groups that didn't bid on it before complained about this one as well. So that was my red flag. The other thing that concerns me is it, a lot changes in healthcare in five years, and I'm concerned about the five-year term of this. I would feel more comfortable at like three years, but I just, I'm concerned about the five-year. But I just wanted you to know, that was a red flag, I think, a lot of us, you know, because two years ago, we had the same organizations mad because they didn't, they didn't get, for some reason, they didn't bid or whatever. And, you know, two years later, the same, same group, same, you know, didn't get to bid. So that was a red flag for me, so.
Okay, well, let me address these issues for you. The first time, when we started this program, and the two big entities complained that they didn't have a chance, so we went out and we rebid it. Memorial still did not submit after we rebid it. Springfield Clinic did, and they offered to try. They don't have anything at all like this. They were willing to create a program. Their offer last time was to give us a room in the back of the Mohaw facility, they're off of South Six, where the city does their drug testing and their work injury thing. Employees have a very bad feeling about that building to begin with. It wouldn't have worked. And they wanted us to pay all of the costs, and then any savings we realized, they wanted us to split evenly with them. So they wanted us to take all the risk, they wanted us to develop a product for them that they could then remarket to someone else, and they wanted to keep half of our savings. So that was, that was just a no from labor. That was a, that was a hard no. Memorial's never submitted anything to us, so I don't know. I do know a little bit about the program they do with the school district, which, from what I understand, is basically an additional discount off of charges to any of their dock-in-the-box facilities, which really isn't a wellness program. It covers the wellness care that's mandated by the Affordable Care Act. But we already have a discount off of charges with Memorial through our health claim contract, which is very competitive. So a couple extra percent off of that for people to go to a dock-in-the-box is not going to be the kind of savings we're seeing with our own standalone facility. And it doesn't provide a wellness coach, it doesn't provide engagement, it doesn't provide the chronic care management where you get one-on-one, excuse me, interaction with your employees. Your chronic condition people are who drive the majority of your costs for a health plan. So if you got a diabetic that's not doing his A1Cs, if you got a guy with hypertension and high blood pressure that's not taking his blood pressure readings, that's not following his prescription regimen, those are heart attacks and ICU stays and the big six-figure bills that are the part of our plan that we can't really budget for. We can budget for the doctor's visits. And our wellness plan, I could show you the numbers, year over year, more people are doing their exams, and the people that are repeat on their exams were blown away. They're improving every year. And it's saving us money. And I mean, quite frankly, we do have two other big people in town, but HSHS Leadwell is also a big local business, it's a huge part of this community. And quite frankly, they've been an amazing partner for this plan. Anything we've asked them to do, they've been over backwards to provide. They're out there beating the bushes, trying to find us planned partners, so our fixed costs are going down. We're looking at trying to add maybe one more planned partner. So. maybe one more plan partner. So I I I hope you will take my word for it. We really have done our due diligence on this. And if Memorial has something they wanted us to look at, they could have proposed it. We would not have turned it away. We would have gave it due diligence, I assure you. We have never turned anyone away. If they've completed the RFP process properly, we have never turned anyone away. And we wouldn't, especially given the history we've had with them. We went out of our way to make sure they would participate, so we didn't run into this roadblock in the 11th hour.
Thank you.
As far as the five-year deal goes, the standard, like I said, engagement is the point of wellness. And you can't be hopping around. The standard is a four-year contract. That's what we usually do. Our plan partner is Hope. As you know, from us trying to do a one-year extension last year, we're one year off of their schedule. We're trying to do a five-year this year to get on the same cycle with them. And then next time, we'll do four-year, four-year, you know, we'll stay on that. But we're trying to get caught up. So if we get to our next cycle then, and we vote to go with someone else, they're not stuck paying for a whole facility by themselves when we bail out and go with a different vendor. And that's just courtesy. When you have a good plan partner like that, you owe them a little bit of consideration when you do these things. So only reason we went with five-year this time, just to get on the cycle. If we'd got the one-year extension, next year, we would have been asking for a four-year. So.
Well, we did ask, reach out to HSHS, see if we can get a three-year price, what that would be. Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Alwood, I know I said this to you before. I want to thank you again for all the work you've done for a lot of years on these very issues. And it's extremely complicated. We've been through some very rough times. And you and the committee have done a phenomenal job. That's really not the, you know, the questions I had really dealt with. We got these phone calls that Alderman Hanauer alluded to from a couple of the large entities saying, I didn't know about her, or what have you. And my understanding is, and it's really a question for the HR department or budget, that my understanding is that, I saw the email that showed that the city sent out the emails. We did get a reply where they declined, those two declined. Isn't that correct?
We actually got a letter.
Okay, there you go.
Right here, where they they respectfully.
Thank you. So that answers that question.
Yeah. Now, Memorial, we did not. We, Brooke from HR specifically called their office, let them know it was coming. She got all the information, sent it to Purchasing, Purchasing sent them the packet via email. They knew it was coming. They were expecting it. We never got a response. We never got a return on the email. Like I said, we we didn't just send the email. Brooke actually called and spoke with the office, made sure we had the right information, said, we've been on this street before, and we didn't want to be here. We're now, you know, we've got these contracts held up. And and the Trustmark, that's our TPA. That contract is not really tied to this issue. So it really needs to move forward. So those contracts can get signed and in place before the first of the year. So but we really need to move forward with all three of these. Our wellness program's working very well. HSHS has done a phenomenal job through the COVID crisis, taking care of our members when they can't get into the other doctors. They just had a flu clinic that was a phenomenal success. And quite frankly, they've been a very good vendor partner with us, you know. And they came in with the lowest bid and the lowest disruption rate. So.
Thank you.
I would like to see you guys move this and move on it so we can get back to the business of running the health plan.
Mayor.
Yeah.
When's the final date that this has to be approved by?
I think we still have the next council meeting.
Okay.
I think it's before January. I know that. But Jim Cusen can give.
In order to be ready for our open enrollment, which will be in January, we need to get the information out to our employees. So the longer we delay, the more problems that creates. And I just want to add a couple of things to what Mike said. He did talk about some cost savings. One thing I wanted to mention was recently, Hope awarded, or excuse me, HSHS awarded one of their employees a Good Catch Award. We had an employee that went, they diagnosed an issue, they sent him on to a specialist, and they said that actions potentially saved that person's life. So there's some things there. As far as the five-year term, as Mike indicated, that's to get us aligned with the Hope current lease. But as with all of our contracts, they can, we can opt out if there's any issues at any point in time. So I just wanted to add that for your information as well.
Thanks, Jim. Alderman McMenamin?
Mister gentleman, you've done an outstanding job tonight. Mike, you've really explained well the benefits of our current wellness program. It's saving us money. Our employees are very satisfied with it. We have a great partnership with St. John's. I think you've answered the questions that were raised last week about, did everyone have a fair chance at this opportunity? I think you've explained the five years very well. And so, based on all that, I'll make a motion that we put this on the debate agenda tonight for a possible passage vote tonight to get this behind us. So you can move on and do what needs to be done with our employees to let them know the program's available and we continue it.
Moving forward, next council meeting?
I mean, tonight, if we've had all the questions answered, I don't see what else can come up.
I guess I'd like to hear what the three-year option would be. That's why I asked Jim Cusen.
We have approached the partners, and if three years is possible, it'll adjust for the HSHS contract, the Leadwell contract. Basically, you would take what we have and chop off the last two years. So that would be simple. The lease with Hope, there's some other factors, so it wouldn't necessarily just be the same process. So both partners would be agreeable to a shorter term if necessary.
And then the other one is to make sure both the downtown facility and the south end, I wanted them to price that because that was just for one year, I think. And then, I don't know how that would be priced. So we want to get that nailed down to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Pricing downtown is contingent on our utilization down there, so that can fluctuate.
Very good. So my preference would be wait two weeks until we get those answers, and we'll have more clarity then, unless somebody else thinks otherwise.
As long as it doesn't jeopardize anything, Mayor, if I can, I would be open to that.
I think Jim Cusen can speak to that. Is there a hindrance in waiting two weeks?
Delays, just the things that we're working on right now, our office is now down to eight people in our office. We're trying to work on open enrollment. We're trying to work on electronic open enrollment. We're trying to work on a number of issues, a number of training issues we have to get done. The longer we delay, the more pressure on the office, the more obstacles it creates for us. So, I mean, is it a deal breaker if we have to wait two weeks? No. But obviously, the sooner we can move forward with this, the better.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Is there an appetite? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Alderman DeSanto.
Is there an appetite to move this forward this evening?
I think we've gotten a significant amount of.
Let me answer my questions.
I think we should move on it.
I think we should. We've gotten, I really appreciate the explanation as to why the five-year term is important. And having been on the employee end of open enrollment, I think the more time you have to get those questions answered and the materials put together, the better the enrollment period will be for the city employees.
Mike, you have some, you'd like to.
Mister Mayor.
It's a pleasure of the council. Go ahead. Alderman Proctor.
I'll second Alderman McMenamin's motion.
Can I just, for clarification, Alderman McMenamin, you're talking about 202382, 383, and 384?
I think they're all related, so we'd have to vote on each one tonight.
Okay, but you do plan to move, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of moving, which number is one of those? Mister Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Turner.
Is there some interest in, is there some interest in lowering the length of the contract?
I think for myself, I think the second, you know, location, I think that's a key component downtown. I think, you know, most of our employees are here. You have power plant employees out there. Personally, I've expressed this to Jim Cusen, if we get to the position where we close the downtown location, which is shared with Horseman, or we don't participate in that, it's almost catering to Hope School. Nothing against Hope School, but it's kind of shifted everything out there. So I think the downtown location is a key component to that health service. So whatever that cost is to retain it during the duration is a key that I think it's well worth entertaining. The other one is, I heard, as everybody did, is with regards to potential cost savings. I got more reassurance through conversations with Jim Cusen with regards to the amount that we're paying. But to see what the three-year would be in comparison, you know, you know, I just thought that would be prudent to move in that direction. But whatever the pleasure of the council is, I think the real key for me, though, is that downtown location. I am a little bit concerned if we would go to one location. The other model, just so everybody knows, is, you know, I'm not insured through the city. But, you know, I go to Springfield Clinic, and I go to all the different locations. So to me, it's about convenience. But for others, it's about, you have a designated site. It's a premium service that we're paying for, which is great, especially during a pandemic. I think during a pandemic, you'd rather have a larger facility where you're not in contact with a lot of people. So that is the premium price that we're paying for, which makes sense. So I don't mind that service. I did ask that we look into Horseman. I'm not sure if they had, because that's 1,000 employees that, right now, use the location that we're using downtown. I'm not sure if they entertain the program or not. But that'd be a key partner, especially it's all about the numbers, if they're interested. So those are some of the dynamics. But I think looking into the three-year, making sure that we are going to keep the downtown location to available to us, I think, is a key component. And I think it's $100,000 extra a year. But I don't know if that's locked in for the remainder of each year.
I can, I can tell you that Labor also loves the downtown location. Our members, the committee likes the downtown location. And we're constantly working with HSHS. They're they're working internally, and they're constant trying, constantly trying to find us a way to get it lower. We said that number fluctuates based on utilization down there. Our utilization is starting when we moved the facility from the Fit Club out to Hope. A lot of it transferred downtown. Now the people, our wellness coaches mainly out at the the Hope facility because it's a more room-for-us facility. The downtown location has had no problem holding our volume of our our patients as well. There's been no issues with that. The staffing is phenomenal. And at this time, we we want to keep that open as long as possible, too. And we're working on ways to do that, even through the longer contracts. So the committee doesn't have a flavor for getting rid of the downtown location either. And like I said, moving forward, HSHS is constantly working with this. They're coming in, they're giving us more cost-saving things. They're trimming the fat where they can. They're they're doing everything to keep us happy. And I believe that's going to continue throughout the duration of this contract. And like I said, Labor is on board with doing everything we can to make sure that that happens. So I I think that that will work good. Like I said, the wellness program really is a longevity-based program. I myself personally would prefer the five-year. But once again, it's up to you guys. In my opinion, when you do a five-year program, right now, they're giving us a five-year cost lock on prices. Two years from now, they come out with a new Affordable Care Act 2 that blows stuff through the roof. We're locked in. We do a three-year contract. When we go back in three years, we might be looking at significantly more. And that's why we try to get these locks. And when we do contracts with people, we try to get provisions for extensions in case stuff like that's going on that have caps on it. Said, I promise you, we really do look at every penny. Because, you know, we're funding it, too. So.
I know how hard you worked. And just so everybody knows, I don't have a horse at the race, because I have a relative at Memorial working. I have one at HSHS working.
And I understand. I appreciate everybody's comments. And at any time, anything comes up with any of these, you guys want to personally get ahold of me, you know, almost everyone knows how to get ahold of me. I make myself available all the time. So.
Yep. Alderman Conley, then Alderman Proctor, and Alderman Turner.
Thank you. I would just like to say briefly, I'd like to see all three of these passed tonight for the five years. I think if we've learned anything recently, wellness and access to health resources is imperative. And then I would, I haven't heard one complaint from an employee about this program. And we've got a committee that's worked very hard to bring us a strong proposal. So I'm certainly in support of moving all three of these tonight.
Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head about healthcare costs. We have no idea what's going to happen in a couple of years, and so it locks us in. But my question is, so if we went with the five-year, is there a risk of losing the downtown location? Or is it just, I just don't understand how that comes into play.
The downtown location, we're just kind of pay as we go. And I mean, as long as we want to keep going with it, they're going to keep, allow us to keep going with it. You know, they don't want us to stop doing that option.
So they're really two separate issues?
Yeah. So we're, and we're doing, the committee's been being very creative with our wellness funds and shifting things around. And the employees have been kicking in a little bit extra by choice to help keep that going because we understand the importance of it. So.
So they're two separate issues. They're not related?
Yeah, they're not related to it. But yes, like I said, it is the flavor of the committee to keep that facility a part of it as long as, you know, if it gets to the point where it's not, it's getting into our cost saving. Okay. So the soft, the hard savings, that's the stuff on numbers that you guys can see here. And it's impressive. It looks good. It doesn't even make a dent in the real savings. The good catch that Director Cusen told you guys about a little while ago, if that guy hadn't gone straight to the doctor right then, he would have had a serious cardiac event. He may have made it, he may not have. Either way, the plan would have been hit with a huge six-figure bill. It would have been a cardiac ICU extended stay if the employee left. We're starting to track now, when Lauren, our health coach, does the wellness exams on our members, and she identifies hypertension, or a heart arrhythmia, or significant diabetes. We have planned partners through this with Prairie Heart and Jocelyn. And these people get referred. And we're now getting reports back that these people are going, and they're engaging. And we're staving off cardiac events. We're staving off diabetic comas. We're staving off these big six-figure. And we, I can't bring you a report and say, this plan saved us $2.8 million this year, because, you know, nobody's going to buy that. Your numbers have to be documentable. But if you talk to anyone in the wellness program or in the wellness community, and if you even Google and look at the benefits of wellness programs, everything you read is going to tell you that the soft savings that you can't actually see are five, 10, 20 times more than your hard save. So we are making a concerted effort to keep the hard savings in a realm where you guys can justify voting for it, and keeping everything open. While we know that the soft savings are tenfold what the hard savings are, so we know that it's justified paying for it. We understand that. So we are going to do our absolute best to keep that facility going.
Alderman Turner.
No, I don't think anyone is questioning the benefits of the program. I think that it's been, it's been very beneficial, and it's accessible. And and those are the main things that we want to look at is the accessibility. So I'm all in favor of passing this tonight so we can get that process going, because I do agree with Alderman Conley. A lot of people go through a lot of reviews and research and all of that to try to get to, you know, what they want to do with their benefits package. Not like me, I just say same as last year, same as last year.
We have those employees, too.
But I, but I, I do think that there is some benefit in reducing the contract to three years. I think that Alderman Hanauer is correct, that healthcare is, changes rapidly. I mean, look at what happened this year. No one would have thought that we would have COVID and all the things that go along with it, and all of the astinuating circumstances and healthcare needs that COVID has brought us. So I think that there is some benefit in looking at reducing the contract to three years. So I would like to make an amendment that we reduce the term from five years to three years.
Second. Moved in second to change it to three years, or check on the pricing first? Or what's the motion? Alderman Hanauer.
Well, I think.
Well, I, I think, number one, I, I think we got to get a price first before we, you know. That's why I, I like to hold, I'd like to, look, I, I want to get this through. And I, I will tell you that, but I think that we need to, to look at this three-year. Understand that we start doing five-year contracts now, we're taking the next, the next mayor, the next council out, basically out of the equation until their last year end. And there, there might be some changes. And then the other question I have is, you know, I agree, Mayor, that, that the downtown facility is important. I, we got a lot of people that, that can zip over there. They can't all go down, go out to Hope, you know, at, you know, on a quick trip and that. I, I would like to, to make sure that we have an out clause, where if they close the downtown facility, that, that we have the option to, to cancel the contract and look at, at other options. I think that puts leverage in our corner. But I, I would, I would prefer that we just, we wait and get a price on the three-year. We can, we can, we, hopefully, we could get a price by next week and we can, we can pass it in two weeks. That's just my opinion.
Alderwoman Conley, then Donlin, and then DeSenzel.
I, I understand where Alderman Hanauer and Turner are coming from. I, I just would like to say that I, I think that the one thing we can probably reasonably count on when it comes to health costs is that they're, they're not going to go down. If we're locked in for five years at a good rate right now, as you said earlier, in, in, in three years from, that, that could easily be something very different. So I'm not opposed to looking at a three-year contract, but I, I do think that there's a lot of value to five years of stability for this option.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just depending on the flavor of the council, we certainly could get the answers to the questions that you had alluded to, Alderman. And since we're going to be here next week anyway, we could always have a special council meeting called appropriately and deal with it next week. If we wanted to wait for those answers, if that's not the desire, then of course, we could always vote to the C thing. But just wanted to throw it out there.
I'd welcome that.
Alderwoman DeSenzel?
Thank you. I'm open to what Alderman Donlin's suggesting, but I do agree with Alderwoman Conley, that health costs are just going to go up for employees to have the security of knowing what they're going to have for the next five years. And that we don't, we already know that we can opt out. We, we've been told that we are able to opt out if we, if we so choose, or if something isn't working out. So for me, especially in the times we're living in, let's go forward with the five years and give our employees a piece, some peace of mind.
So the, any other discussion on that? I think there's an amendment on three years. Alderwoman Turner?
I can count. I don't, I don't, I don't think there's, I don't think there's consensus or enough people interested in the going from five to three. So let's just do it.
Just do it?
Yeah.
So the motion on the floor is to pass as submitted. I guess, should we have the caveat on the downtown location at all? Or if, I guess I'd ask Director McCarty come up, or someone that can explain the pricing, because I think this year is an extra $100,000. Would that be the price? Can we lock that in for the remainder of the five-year contract?
A couple of things. One, just as a practical matter, the downtown clinic is an optional add-on. That's been offered. The contract and the RFP was for one location that went out. So that's how everybody submitted. Now, we're lucky, we're in a position where we can have the optional add-on with the downtown clinic. Horace Mann and St. John's, they're, it's their clinic. We're just sort of jumping in, and we're splitting the costs based on our utilization. The mayor's 100% right. It, it, it's not a fixed cost, because it's based on our utilization. And I can tell you, as the office that pays the bill, that that cost has been going up. And Mike was talking about it, eating in the cost savings. And it does, but it's also a matter of, you know, it's a benefit analysis of the convenience versus the cost. The first year, I think we paid around $50,000 or something to be a part of it. Well, it started getting used more and more. In the second year, it was a little over 100, 104,000, I think it was. This year, it's almost 150,000, 140,000, because we're using it more and more. And it's a very simple calculation. It's based on the number of people that go there. So if the city of Springfield has 33% of the utilization, and Horace Mann has 33%, and St. John's, we all pay a third. City of Springfield, with our population and our, our, our folks that have started going there, if we hit 50%, we're going to pay, we're going to pay almost 100% of our Hope clinic, plus 50% of the downtown clinic. So the hard savings that Mike was referencing, those disappear. That's why we look at it on a case-by-cases each and every year, and we negotiate each and every year. And we've been successful. What was proposed this year was higher, we negotiated, we eventually got it down. But I don't know, and we'd have to check to see, but I don't know that they would be comfortable, HSHS locking in, well, I shouldn't say, HSHS and Horace Mann and St. John's, who also pay for the clinic, they would be comfortable, say, locking us in at 125,000. Because if our people start to overrun it, they may ask us to cut back, or put limitations on the appointments that our people, because it's their clinic. We're just lucky to have it as an optional add-on. And so far, everybody's on board with us having it as an optional add-on. And we're committed to keeping it that way. But I don't know that we're in a position to guarantee it in the contract, and that's not how the RFP was done anyway. None of the others submitted that way. It was all submitted with one location. We're just fortunate to have that optional ability. And we, we're committed to keeping it, as Mike said.
Alderman Proctor?
Well, okay, I just had, you know, a question on that, because in the agreement here, it seems like, you know, they agree to having that location there at Horace Mann. But then I guess there's like, every year, they'll review that process. But then it has to be mutually agreed upon between the two parties, right? To, and so if we disagree, then they still have to do it, right?
They still have to do what? I'm sorry.
Keep the Horace Mann location.
Well, they're going to keep that anyway, because that's the Horace Mann and St. John clinic.
Well, I mean, let us go there, I guess, then.
Yes, yeah. So far, everybody has been on board with that. The only issue I could ever see, and I don't think we're anywhere close to that, is, let's just say 100% or 90% of our utilization starts going there. That could be a problem for them, because then it might mean long waits, or their people can't get in, and that might be an uncomfortable situation for them. We're not there. We have about a 50-50 utilization. It used to be about a 90-10. It's going up. I think we've sort of plateaued. We've been looking at the numbers that have come in, and I think we're kind of plateaued at about a 50-50. And as Mike said, the benefit of our Hope clinic down there is, it's bigger and better. It's a beautiful place. If you've never been there, you should check it out. Plenty of rooms. We also dispense generic prescriptions out of there at a discount through HSHS's buying power. So that's a benefit. They don't get that at the downtown clinic. Our wellness coach is basically down there. She's got her own room. We've got this biometric machine and everything down there that people use. And on top of that, that's where our chronic care location's going to be as well, is down there. So I don't see that being a problem. I think a lot of our utilization will remain at Hope. It's just that what we have downtown is, is an optional add-on. And I think that that's probably how it's going to continue to be viewed.
Okay. But I guess my question is, it seems like if, there's questions, if we approve this now without amending it to guarantee that downtown location, we'll lose it. But it seems like there's enough protection in this language right now that we're not going to lose it, because it has to be mutually agreed upon, or?
Right.
And I think your point is right. If, if it becomes crowded, where it takes two hours to see something, I think people will start to go to Hope. You know, again, they're just, they're going to go where they get the best care, and they feel like they get, you know, quickest. So I don't see any problem with
Right.
how it's written right now.
Yeah. To answer your question, I don't think that there's any concern about losing the downtown clinic.
Thank you. So I don't think we need an amendment for it, then, right?
I don't think that we feel that you would need one.
Okay, thanks. Yeah.
Any other discussion? So there's a motion to move forward with 2020-382, 2020-383, 2020-384. So I just read them into the record?
The, the proper motion would be a motion to remove or discharge from committee, 382, 383, 384.
We'll move.
Second.
When that's passed, then you may take them up, because now they're before the, before the council.
All in favors, or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. 2020-382, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a five-year contract with HSHS Medical Group, Inc., to provide certain near-site clinic services for the City of Springfield's health insurance program for employees covered by collective bargaining agreements for, and for all employees not covered by collective bargaining agreements, and retirees participating in the City of Springfield's health plan from March 1, 2021, through February 28, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $3,800,000 for the Office of Human Resources. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved. And second, to approve, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes nine voting yes, none voting no, and none voting present. 2020-383, an ordinance authorizing, pardon me?
Can we do the other two together?
Yep.
Second.
Been moved in second to do an ominous vote on 2020-383 and 2020-384. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. 2020-383, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a five-year contract with Trustmark Health Benefits to serve as the third-party administrator and the utilization review management team for the City of Springfield's health insurance program for employees covered by collective bargaining agreements, for all employees not covered by collective bargaining agreements, and retirees participating in the City of Springfield's health plan from March 1, 2021, through February 28, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $1,245,888. 2020-384, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a five-year contract with Vision for Hope to provide a near-site location for an HSHS Leadwell Clinic for the City of Springfield insured employees for an amount not to exceed $156,691 for the Office of Human Resources. Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
Been moved. And second, to approve. Second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance has passed nine voting yes, none voting no, and none voting present. Thank you very much. Is there any other unfinished business? Alderwoman DeSenzel?
Just really quickly, there was another, it was a hit-and-run today at Lawrence and MacArthur. I've talked about this intersection on numerous occasions. And once again, it happened today. And I wanted to thank CWLP employees who were on the scene first and administered first aid to the person who was hit and run. So thank you very much to those CWLP employees that, that helped the injured person. I know there are improvements coming for that intersection, but they cannot come soon enough. There's not a day that goes by that I do not hear sirens and then immediately get a phone call, text, something about that intersection. You don't have to come up, Director. I know what you're going to say. Thanks, anyway. We need it fixed.
Yeah, when is that scheduled, the improvements?
Not soon enough.
We need to do it.
Sure.
Yeah, we just selected a consultant to do the design on the project. We're going to have them get going on it as quick as possible. But it takes time. Unfortunately, we can't just construct it. But we'll hurry up and have them get on the design. We did receive $1.579 million worth of HSIP funds that, that IEDOT awarded us for that project, because they know that it needs to be improved.
And what's the projected timeframe? Once the design works done?
Yeah, I would estimate two, two years. We'll try to expedite the process, though.
Yeah, that's, I think, isn't it the most dangerous intersection in the city? Is that still?
Local, that's solely underneath the city's jurisdiction. It is one of our highest accident intersections year after year.
Very good.
It was on the Ward 5 side of things, so.
Thanks.
Director? Director?
Is this your Hilltop Road?
This is all three of us have a Hilltop.
Yeah, we're all right there, actually.
I get a lot of complaints about that intersection, too. So obviously, Godspeed.
I have a couple of Hilltop Roads.
Hilltop Road, Times Third.
Alderman Minema?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, since you're up there, Director, can you, if you have them in your, in memory, that the expected weeks for the branch pickup, there's lots of interest in that. I know we touched on it last week. Are you any more firm with those weeks for each quadrant?
We're just waiting to hear back on our equipment. We have a couple of grapple trucks that are down. But tentatively, October, we'll start October 26 in the Northwest quadrant, and then we'll move to the Southwest quadrant, the week of November 2. My dates may be a little off. But, and then we'll move to the Southeast quadrant, November 9, and then November 16 will be in the, in the Northeast area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, without Alderman Redpath here, what is the status of Hilltop Road? I guess it's been delayed for a little while.
Mike?
What? I didn't ask the question.
Got to go, man.
I know CWLP's wrapping up their utility relocates, and then we still need Amarin and Comcast to remove some of their utilities. But we're still shooting, wrapping up in November.
So it's Amarin and Comcast are delaying it?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Alderman Gregory?
Did you forget me?
Oh, I lost that. Sorry. Alderman Turner?
I have two questions while you're standing there, though. So on Livingston from Cook Street down, you know, it's only like about three, about three blocks long, and it's very narrow. And there's parking on both sides of the street, a lot of speeding. But it's my understanding that there were no parking signs on, on the west side of the street. Can you double-check on that? Because if there, if there isn't, there really should be, because it's, it's already a very narrow street. And then with the parking on both sides, it's, it's not only extremely narrow, but it's very dangerous. And then there's speeding up and down there. So can you double-check on that, please?
If all of the traffic engineers check on that, right away. Thanks.
Yeah. So if there's not, no parking on the west side, then we should probably look at doing that. And then, okay, the second one's not for you.
Alderman Gregory, you had some.
I have another one.
Okay, go ahead. Alderman Turner?
No respect around here. So can we, where are we with the COVID relief micro grant program?
The, that's, Maliezel's working with HUD to work out the parameters on that. But we
So we still don't have, so we, we still don't have?
We have to have a public hearing, because with the grant portion's okay, it's with the, it wasn't clarified enough, is my understanding. But with the loan one, you have to use
No, I'm interested in the grant, in the grant portion.
Yeah, the grant one, they want us to do a public hearing. We do have another award of $700,000. So we'll be doing a public hearing probably within a month to make the determination of additional funds, or how to allocate those funds. And so that will be, yeah, she'd have to explain it, but she's been talking with HUD about that portion.
Yeah, because my, because my concern is that we started this process several months ago, and businesses, I mean, we're almost in this, we're almost in a situation where they don't, you know, they're, they're starting to, they've found their own relief in other areas. Not saying that it's still not necessary, but I think we do a disservice, because this drug out for so long, and we promised relief, and we haven't been able to provide. And if we, and if we drag out another two months, we're talking about January.
Yeah, actually, I view it as a benefit. I think the state's doing a business interruption grant right now. So I'd rather use other people's dollars and then have these dollars available to small businesses. Ours is a micro loan. And just so everybody has this clear understanding, I was on a U.S. conference of mayors through Bloomberg, Harvard. And there is very much a lot of concern, not necessarily right now, but after the election, going into the winter months, the tightening of credit and how that looks for, you know, entities. So it's going to be important that we have resources at our disposal at that point in time. So all of that coming together is important. But in answer to your question, there is a technicality, is my understanding through HUD and discussions with OPED, that there has to be another public hearing, and to make sure there's clarity with regards to the grant program, as well as the micro loan program. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, we, today, we received a pretty, pretty good email from IML. I don't know if you've, if you got to see that yet. But one of the things they have highlighted is it's all payroll for eligible employees, i.e. public, public safety and public health personnel as defined above. From March 1 to December 31, will qualify as an eligible expense. Any fringe benefit costs which comes as a contingent cost on payroll are also included. So, so that's, that's a
Good news.
Good news for, for us going forward. So I don't know if Director McCarty saw that, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody
Public safety employees.
I did want to get the Eagles hopes up on that, Alderman, but since you brought it up.
I stole your thunder, Bill.
Well, it wasn't my, I was trying to be careful with that, because, yeah, we, we discovered that last week and started looking into it, and actually reached out to colleagues around the state, and they had similar interpretations. The problem that we have is, we did reach out The problem that we have is we did reach out to Crowe, who's kind of the gatekeeper for IEMA, for the federal money and all that. They don't have the same interpretation. So they have a discussion based on us reaching out to them this week with DCO to confirm or to not confirm that that is in fact the case. I will tell you that to get the ball rolling, we did submit a claim for twenty-nine million dollars for our payroll for police and fire. That got their attention. And they, they reached out to us and said they're not sure. They did ask us to adjust it. We did adjust it down, and we submitted for the full four point eight million allotment that we have at their request. But certainly, we, we have much more than four point eight million in public safety payroll costs. So, we have submitted. The conversations are going, and yes, there's a possibility that that will allow us to utilize and tap into the entirety of the four point eight million. I just didn't want to say anything yet until I got final confirmation on it. I know how excited the mayor gets, and I didn't want to tell him quite yet, but now he knows.
Alderman Condon.
Thanks, Ralph.
Thanks a lot, Ralph.
But actually, the four point eight, that was IML, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Illinois Municipal League, I think National League of Cities have, you know, lobbied the federal government and the state to have that same interpretation. So, I know there is a community up north, I think it was Walkegan, received two million dollars of reimbursement. So, we planned, as Director McCarthy said, we did request the four point eight million dollars that was already allocated. And there's hopes of having a Heroes Act pass. I know it's in discussion. More likely that might happen after the election, where we would be, cities would just receive additional funding that could include revenue reimbursement, but time will tell on that.
And there, and there is a questionnaire, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. There is a question, on the questionnaire, when we do the submissions, they, they always ask, will you expect to get your full allotment, and do you think you can submit more than your full allotment? And we, we've checked yes on both of them. So I hope that's the case. I hope to find out this week that that is the case. Certainly, that would help us an awful lot. And by next week, well, as soon as I find out, I'll email everybody and let them know.
Thank you.
Alderman Tomlin?
Positive.
Yes, no, it's, it's great news if it, if it works out.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I kind of want to follow up on Alderman Turner's question. I didn't realize the business money would be so delayed. Where are we on our rent assistance program?
I asked, Maliezel will give an update on that, so she's checking with the Urban League.
Have funds started, have they started to distribute those funds?
I certainly hope so, but she's gonna give a report this week.
Okay, so will we hear maybe an update next, next Tuesday? Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Hello. Nate, you don't gotta get up, but when, when we do, and, and I'm gonna help, try to, you know, help our public works team when we do come over into my neck of the woods with, with just getting out the message for trees and stuff. I know right now, we, you know, it's, you know, a little, little bit much. I have received some calls about trees and stuff like that, and I knew the pickup, the tree pickup was coming soon. So, you know, I'm gonna try to, you know, get the word out, so we can, you know, make sure we do a, a good job along with you guys. We have some, first, let me, let me ask Mr. Zarco. Mr. Zarco, we, we passed the ordinance not too long ago with some guidance for our convenience stores and things, and, and I think we're at our ninety, sixty to ninety-day period. And I'm just wondering, have we, have we sent out notifications to those entities that will qualify under that ordinance to look for compliance on those?
I will have to check. I did talk with the Police Department about it, about getting their status.
Yes, sir.
I will follow up on that, and I'll let you know tomorrow.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And just the last thing, our, for a house, Nate, this question will be for you. For a house, like, for instance, you know, in my ward, I have houses and old businesses that will be boarded up and things of that nature. Do we, do we have in our ordinance for, for properties like that, that have boarded up? For status updates, what they're gonna do, where are we going with these properties? And, and the reason why I ask questions like these, I've sort of been on the road with it. I recently visited a, a, a location that was looking to put a business in there. And I met with the owner, and, and, you know, it's funny, because, because I, I eat at his, I eat at his place at another part of town that looks beautiful. And to come, to come to find out that he owned this location, you know, we had a, a conversation on, you know, why the difference? You know, and, and it disturbed me a little bit. But we, we definitely had a good conversation on, on, you know, you know, I would, you know, love to see it look the same and, and the care that we take out west with him. So, so I say that to say the, the other establishments that are, are closed down, I know, like, I got a building on Loveland. Used to be an old barber shop, it's boarded up, been boarded up for a while, and across the street from it, like, do we have any up, like, you know, do they have to go through a registration process to, you know, continually update us on this, when they're gonna cut the grass? Because I, I know you guys get tired of me calling you to, to do it, and then, and jump, you guys gotta jump through hoops sometimes to, to get that. So I, I, I'm trying to, you know, from here, think of ways to help us out in our community without working us to. I've had conversations with, with some fellow Aldermen, just, just some thoughts to try to help our, our Public Works Department out. You see how much we're talking to these guys? These guys are only getting about seventeen million in our budget. You see how much we're talking to them about what we need for our city? So I just wanna remember that come budget season. And I thank you and your team for all the work that you do. You guys do a good job, and, and I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, we do have a registration process, and we want to continuously improve that. We're also, in regards to our surplus management properties, some of our vacant lots, we're also working with OPED and OBM purchasing in order to get those out there and manage them a little bit more effectively and break down the silos by utilizing City Works in the permitting, licensing, and land section. So, look forward to working with you on that.
Alderman Proctor?
I promised I'd ask about this. Has there been a decision made on the, the option of giving tours at Oak Ridge Cemetery?
Not to my knowledge.
Is that something that, you need to decide then, I guess, or, or do we need to decide here?
Oak Ridge Cemetery and the, that was with the tour and the foundation boards.
The issue is with the, the board has the authority to decide that under our ordinances. It is my understanding that the request was rejected. I have not received any additional information since that time. It was my understanding, again, just what was said at the council meeting, then after that, in talking with one of the individuals. The concern primarily related to the potential liability, because there's not lighting there. This has been an ongoing issue through the years, and I think the board has been consistent because of concern about being there after hours, there's no lighting, and potential for people to potentially, like, trip and fall and things of that nature that would create liabilities for the, for Oak Ridge and for the city.
Okay, I think you just need some finality to the discussion.
And I will follow, I will follow up, because I have not, since that discussion and the day after following up on it, I actually haven't heard any further discussion about it, other than the board decision that had been made, that the gentleman had been notified. But I will follow up and see if there's been any other action.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
No problem. I'll let you know tomorrow.
Alderman Turner.
So, I know, I just, I don't have total recall, just sometime recall. So, when we did the anti-racism, anti-bias resolution, there was a provision in there related to TIF funding and minority participation. So have we moved to include that in the developer's agreement template?
If, if that's directed to me, the answer is yes, that's being looked at now. We currently have all of the required federal and state rules, and we're looking at that to see if it needs to be further refined or how that might look.
Yeah, I, I would hope that we would include some language that's very specific to that, because I think if we leave it open-ended and leave it up to interpretation as to how that relates back to other language that's already in there, that it will be overlooked, and it will be then left up to whoever's overseeing those contracts to kind of be put in a position of micromanaging them. And I don't think that's fair to the, to our employees, that they have to do that. So, if we can put some very specific language in there that relates back to it, that would be preferable.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're following up, and I think OPED actually did ask for a review of those documents, and I think that is actually in process right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other old business? The census was extended till October thirty-first, and Ward ten still holds the lead. As far as new business, any new business with the city council members? The firefighter application process is open now. I think you can go online to complete that. The other thing, Facebook Live, we, actually, this Wednesday at noon is with regards to health matters, talking about flu and COVID, and we have representation from all our medical areas. Gina Carnde from Memorial Health Services, Dr. Hrepri Mander from HSHS Illinois, Dr. Stephen Amaro from Springfield Clinic, and Dr. Vidya Sandresh Shan. I probably butchered that name. I need to learn that better. She probably knows.
Sun direction.
Sun, sun direction. With SIU School of Medicine, and also with the incident command group with Sangamon County, I believe. And she participating in the public health, right. She's the lead person. Great.
Very, very smart.
Care to say anything about that?
Uh, she's very smart.
Okay. Alderman De Senzo.
Have we established trick-or-treating hours for the city yet?
We will have an announcement tomorrow. What we're trying to do is coordinate it with the villages, you know, like Jerome, Leland Grove, Southern View and Grand View, so they'll confirm tomorrow. So, we hope to get everybody on the same page with regards to hours and the process. So it's consistent.
Thank you.
Any other new business? As far as individuals signed up to speak, I think, Marky Sarat. Thank you for sticking around.
Good evening, Iowa Mayor. Alderman, Councilmember of Springfield, the City Headquarters. Good evening. Basically, I'm here to speak for the homeless, but real quickly here, I heard a conversation about the funding, how, we need socialized medicine. They will take care of it. I've been, I have Melina Healthcare, and Springfield Clinic and SIU turned me down because I won't go with it. You just can't change your medical plans. So that's the problem going on. So maybe this next election, we might think about getting some socialized medicine like other countries. You gotta worry about it. Okay, you need basic healthcare. That would resolve all of that. And I can't see why people don't think about it, but you think about it. Anyway, I'm here for the homeless, and there's just some problems going on. We've got, it's poor funding. The woman's over there, Julie Benson, she's president. And you guys don't know what the city look like. You ever been to Salt Lake City, Los Angeles, Seattle? It's eight by eight block. You got four or five thousand people out there. You got thirty peoples over there. And the news coming out make a big issue out of it. Okay? There's no groundwater, there's no hot water. I make four rounds around the neighborhood to clean up. At the bread line, at the church, and over there. That's what I said I would do for the city. That's what I gave back. Hey, it's cold out there. Have you ever eaten cold macaroni? And cheese? You ever eaten cold spaghetti? Okay, it don't stick to your stomach. Okay, they need to be housed. What is the problem with that? That is the problem. Okay, it's just, the violence is getting worse. You've got people starting to drink, domesticated or intimidating others. They're fighting. There's no jobs out there. You've got the blue-collar workers, the other, sleeping with each other, sleeping next to each other. I've seen a lot of racism right now. I was told today that the guy stabbed the guy twenty times, because he's a skinhead, and the guy was a homosexual. Okay, whether you're homosexual or not, you're still a human. I couldn't care less. Okay, I'm seeing this. I do say this, though, the police do respond on time. The manager do respond on time. If you check my phone, you will find out I called the police, nine-one-one more than anybody. Okay, and they might take me to the psychiatric clinic. But that's what I do. I'm a healthcare provider. But right now, I'm restricted. I gotta live with it. And it hurts, because the mayor and the police chief, you guys bar people when they have conflicts at Asolut City. So now, they have nowhere to shower. They can eat one meal a day. So hygiene is wrong. We've got porta-potties that filled up. You can't sit on it without it touching you. It's not a porta-potty. Trash cans overflowing. It's a mess. It's unhygienic. If I was the healthcare department, I would shut the whole city down. You guys don't even know what it's, men and women, you don't know what the city look like. I've seen five, ten thousand people in eight hundred blocks. Okay, and that was my mission before I leave here, to help them out. And I'm asking you, you city, please put the people in a home. It's cold out there. I came down there, their feet are frozen. I'm trying to give them warming pads, they don't work that well. I'm kicking people off the ground. A man beating his woman. I have to call the police. I said, the violence, there's no jobs out there. It's only getting worse. And this is in the USA. This country should never go hungry. Should never go hungry, homeless. I can't believe it. We produce more food than any country. We do. So, right, when, when people, like, I can't say you do, but don't take it wrong, you go into your comfortable homes. I make six figures a year normally, but right now, I'm disabled. I'm ready to leave town here. I mean, I'm, I'm sitting right here. But Springfield, I'm here in Illinois, and I care about it. And I'm asking you council members, just think about it. Just think about it. I'll just give you something, something. Ah, wait a minute. I don't like the racism. I don't like the violence. Okay, I can't control alcohol and drugs, but it's cold out there. There's nothing hot to drink in the morning. There's nothing hot to drink at night. The warming suiters should have been open. These people are cold. Those tents don't keep them warm. It's causing a lot of conflict. And we're all human beings. I mean, it could be your child out there. It could be your mom and your father out there. Okay, and you got more people coming in, and they're getting older and older, and they can barely walk. They're in wheelchairs. It hurts my feelings. If I had the money, I would start an endowment fund right now to help out the homeless. That's something our country should do. Like I said, socialized medicine, we shouldn't have to worry about it. I respect the first, first responders, the officers there, the medical. We do things different, Seattle. We don't play. We take care of you. Okay, these people are cold and hungry. Don't kill our people, please. Don't let them die. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Sarat.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Alderman Gregory?
I asked a couple questions, not, not of you, young, thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Fallon, can I ask you a couple questions, sir?
Yes, sir.
No, not you. So I, I met with, just to feel some of our council members, and I met with Mr. Fallon last, last week. And we had, we had a good conversation. He's, 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 he's a little rough at times. He can, he can, I, I can see how he maybe rattles some cages and things, and we talked about that. So my, my question's for you, real quickly. Have you got any further as far as conversation goes and as far as a plan goes since last week? With, with what you're supposed to be doing as far as, you know, gathering with our social, social service providers and the continuing?
I've met with the social service providers that are willing to meet with me. There's a number of social service providers who are not meeting with me.
Thank you. Have you got any closer than last week on the plan?
I met, I, I was actually out today, meeting with Josh Sabo and with Amy, who's his supervisor for Mercy Housing, and we were talking about it. But it really is the case that it's working with all the agencies together to be able to make funding work, and it's difficult to come up with the best plan. But as I said to you, the key is gonna be long-term sustainable funding through Medicaid.
So I, and, and I definitely agree with that. A couple of things that you pointed out to me that, that have been on my mind since then was that we do have a population of, of people who have used some of our social services and, and have been kicked out or, or not there for whatever reason. So that concerns me with, with going into a housing situation or, or even back into, you know, one of the social services to help them get into a permanent housing solution. So, and I thank you, I didn't want to, you know, belabor this point. But, but what I'm, what I'm saying is to, especially to our council members is whether we like it or not, the mayor went out and spent some money for this guy to come in and be a consultant to us. Me and Alderman McMinn have had a brief conversation about this. His con, his contract, I believe, is going to be over if I'm correct. So I don't want money to be wasted. And we haven't got any further than, than what we were before Mr. Fallon has came. I, I feel like if he's going to be here, we spent whatever amount of money on him. I want to see some progress. I want to see some, you know, some, something for that money. You know what I'm saying? And, and I feel like, you know, and I'm not going to call out any names, whoever. Because I think that the city gives the continuum some money or, or, you know, to help. And we brought in a guy to, to, to be a part of that team. We paid him more money. And that money's going to go to waste because everybody's got an ego. Because everybody tripping. So I, I just hope that before this man's contract runs out, because I don't know if it's going to be the flavor of this council to keep you any longer. But until then, I think that, that we, we definitely need to all work together to come up with a plan. And I'm not really speaking on us around the council. Because I, I think this, this, this thing is with our social services and, and, and you and, and a tag team. And then, you know, we'll look at it at the end and try to get in that. So I guess what I'm trying to say in a long, is I would really, really, really like to see all of our social services that are under that cap, that we help provide financial services to meet with this gentleman. And I, I, I get why maybe not some people want to. But we need to know, I think he has some good ideas. I think he has some good thoughts. And I think we need to meet with him. And, and, you know, that's just my thoughts on it.
The one thing I will state is, you know, with John's presence, it has, he's helped identify gaps in services. And there's two entry-level entities that weren't there, where they are getting, where they can, well, you can explain it better than I can. The entryway with regards to homeless to housing, one was Salvage Army, the other one's Fifth Street Renaissance. And previously, there's only three entities. So there'll be five. With regards to Thursday, there's going to be an outreach effort at Tent City with regards to partnering with the police department to go in and assess who's all there. I think that's a key component. It's all about personal relationships and what situation each person's in. And how can we move them to a better position? And so that's what we're trying to get a handle on with regards to that and as well as a winter warming center. And then that model will continue on through the winter warming center where you can work with each person as a, as we have it there. We have them at, in that direct contact. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to express, John?
What the mayor is referring to, and I've been trying to work with Josh to really understand better how coordinated entry is supposed to work. But the currently coordinated entry, which is the organism, is HUD's way of finding out who's on the streets and eligible for housing. Only, primarily only sheltered homeless people were being added to coordinated entry. So while this council is most focused on people who are on the street, particularly Alderman Proctor, since his ward gets the largest group of folks. And I think your ward has, who has Tent City? Those, those groups were not being entered into coordinated entry. They were, and so now they've identified additional agencies to go ahead and do that. But that would have been national best practice. So despite the fact that you would think that that was the priority, they were not even on the list to have housing resources. So that's a, a big win for the city to have that group included. And it's important, the city of Springfield gets less money from HUD because of decisions made overall. And my goal is to help them to get more money from HUD and to use federal resources before you use city resources. And to use state resources before you use city resources. And to use county resources beforehand. You go from the largest, the largest governmental body down instead of asking for local philanthropic dollars and city money first. Thank you. I'm happy to meet again with any Alder person. I don't have phone numbers for everyone, but I did meet with Alderman Gregory. And I appreciate that. And I know I've met with Alderman Proctor.
I think it's good to meet with us. But I, I think we have to keep attempting to meet with the people who have the tools and the knowledge to, to really help this problem. I'm, I can go out there, I go out there frequently. You can meet with Dylan and Conley and, and a good assistant to citizens, oh, everybody. But, you know, we still need a coordinated effort between you and our social services group to come up with a concrete plan. So we can get these people the services that they need to get them to the point of, of, of housing. And I appreciate you guys and I appreciate everybody's hard work. I think we got to get over the hump. We got to get over the, you know, this and, and, and come on. You know, people's lives is, is at stake and let's, let's, let's come on with it now. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate your words, Alderman Gregory.
Alderman Proctor.
John, it's real quick. So you said they identified a missing, I guess, process they were doing about the homeless who are on the streets. So is that starting now?
I think that the mayor's referring, and I think he's been in contact with Josh Sabo. I think there's going to be a concerted effort working with the police and with the continuum to go out on Thursday and identify those who have not been willing to get on that list. Or, but the majority of people that I spoke with had never spoken to one of the regular agencies or weren't allowed to go to those agencies. So it's important that they still be a part of the view of the continuum and not be excluded from, not have a continuum that's focused only on the sheltered homeless, but also the unsheltered homeless. And that's a big distinction.
So is that going to continue after Thursday, then?
It, it is the plan. I mean, part of what I did was talk with Josh about how coordinated entry principles are to be used. And they're used correctly. And some of, some of the issue when you enter unsheltered into coordinated entry is they still may expose that there's a need for a different type of housing. But unless you're sort of on record as the gap, you can't begin to fill it. After that, then, we can focus on fixing projects in Springfield like Hope Springs and other programs to make sure that supportive housing has sufficient strength. But that's going to require Medicaid funding. And that's going to come from either your fed, your two federally qualified healthcare centers or from Memorial Behavioral Health. Those are the Medicaid agencies that need to be increased. And an investment that I suggest the city makes would be investing in those agencies. Because long-term, any dollars you put into that will have a Medicaid match and may be able to continue past that point.
All the woman Turner.
So we've been, we've been talking about this for a while. And it seems, I have a couple of questions. We've been talking about this for a while. And it seems like every time we talk about it, there is a long answer discussion about processes and federal funding and, and a lot of things that are very, very long-term and some things that we have absolutely no control over. So I guess for me, I need to understand what the plan is short-term and how do we address those things that we have control over? Because right now, we don't have control over Medicaid funding. We don't have control over a lot of those things that, that you always talk about. So I guess my question is, what is the short-term goal? What is the timeline for that? And what, what, if what has been your participation in, you know, identifying, making contact with and, and getting people who have not been in the system into the system?
My goal was to train people how to get, get that system to move forward. So it was, as Alderman Gregory pointed out, to work with the funded agencies to do that. I don't necessarily agree. And the reason that I talk about Medicaid services is because this body does have control over whether people are in Medicaid services through investments made by the city. And that you have several very large healthcare providers here who provide Medicaid. And the city can help to ensure that some of the investments by not-for-profit hospitals is in, is more productively used in providing Medicaid services rather than being allowed simply to write off bills for people who pass through emergency rooms.
Again, that's a lo, that's a long-term goal.
It's a short-term.
Well, we, but I, I cannot, I, I don't know what kind of relationship the mayor has with Ed Curtis. But I don't know that he can pick up the phone and tell Ed Curtis, you need to change the way that you're doing this right now. So again, those are long-term things that you're talking about. So when you talk about your goal, short-term, was training individuals on how to do this. Have, have you, has, how is that training? What does that training look like? And how many people have been trained?
Part of what Alderman Gregory pointed out is there's a number of agencies who don't want to participate because of issues that happened before. I have trained the agencies that are able, those are long-term. And those may seem like long-term changes. But in fact, developing the kinds of programs that I'm talking about could have been done with a small amount of money from the city, would have actually caused it. And I have been in conversation with Memorial Behavioral Health. And it's part of my recommendations that I have, that the city invests in that money. It will and could have happened several months ago, but this is a longer process than I anticipated.
So nobody's been, so in other words, nobody's been trained?
Well, I think I've trained a fair number of agencies and I've spent the amount of time. So if you're asking me.
No, that's, that was my question.
Yeah.
And actually, that's what I referred to with the group going to Tent City. That's a part to get everybody in the HMIS system. That's one aspect. I did talk to Ed Curtis, actually, earlier this week. I believe it was this week or last week. And he's all supportive of with regards to outreach. Because that's really what we need to do is the intensive outreach, especially for the street homeless and determine who they are, what their situation is. So we can move them to the next level of supportive services, whichever that may be. And so the key, key component, right now, we have the opportunity, right there at Tent City, of probably thirty to fifty individuals. It hadn't been done previously. And that's what we intend to do, just not there, but also for others. So that's where, you know, Julie Benson helping out. Agencies are coming together, helping hands lowered there. They're becoming a low-barrier service for males, I believe, and males with families. So that they're changing their model. So a lot of initiatives are moving. It's, you know, but it's like the gentleman said, you know, it's getting cold. So the next step is getting a winter warming center opened up. Keep in mind that typically that does not happen till November. Last year, we did open it up early because snow came at the end of October. So that's where we're moving towards. And real quick, in answer to the gentleman's question unfortunately left, I'll have to follow up, or John will follow up, with regards to the cooling center. There is restroom facilities in there, there are shower facilities in there that they should be using. So if that's not happening, we'll have to figure out why not. And then also, there's supposed to be breakfast being served, things of that nature. So we'll have to make that determination as well. If that's not happening, why not?
It just seems like, I don't know, this, this whole Tent City has been there for a couple of months, I guess. And it just seems like we're, we're spinning our wheels. And, and while we're spinning our wheels and not moving and not getting any traction, it's continuing to grow. When it first started, there were probably five tents there. Now there's fifty-five tents there. And, and now we have people, you know, just dropping things there. And, and, and you know, some people may not like what I'm about to say. But when this, when this whole situation started, there were several that said, we need to do something to curtail it. We need to do something to make it more focused. We need to do something to put some parameters around it. And then there were others who were all gung ho. This is great, we need to continue to do it. Now that it's totally out of control, those that were all over the media and, and chastising some of us that were all gung ho, now they're the ones saying, oh, no, no, no. The city has to do something about it. So, you know, those people need to take some responsibility for the catastrophe that we have on our hands right now. That's the first thing. The second thing, now, it's not just, you know, we have, and I, I hate to call it Tent City, but I don't know what else to refer to it as. But now we have this situation that is totally out of control. No one knows how to get a handle on it and get it in control. And it's spilling out onto the rest of the community. I mean, people are, Ward 3 is not really close to there. But people are calling me now because they're concerned that with all of the, the trash and garbage and, and, you know, discarded food and those kinds of things. They're concerned about vermin that's, you know, going to be in, you know, having an infestation in the area that's going to, you know, creep over across 11th Street. I mean, it's, so, I mean, I don't, I don't, as I sit here, I don't have the answer. But we have to figure out how we get control of this, of this situation. And I know that every time we talk about it, the person who is here on contract that's supposed to be helping us address this situation gives us this real long kind of college dissertation on what the model looks like. We all know what the model looks like. We need to know how we put that model into action.
And I, I will tell you, first of all, that I'm working closely with Officer Dos and the chief. I have been more involved than I intended to be in that area. And that garbage is sort of under control. We've done a number of different things that have taken care of that. And everyone at Tent City knows that the November 1st, when the warming center opens, that there isn't, that those people who are staying there will have an alternative. The focus of mine has been on focusing on making sure that homeless center gets, that this is the last time it happens and that the continuum needs to move back. When they're, when and whom, they need to be evaluating homeless. The unsheltered homeless along with sheltered homelessness, that is the responsibility of the continuum long-term and needs to be shifted away from it being a city responsibility. Because that's how it is in other cities. And so this is something that's related to pandemic. And I'm, and there are no short answers. I'm not a person who gives short answers. I do admit that. But it also is complicated. And I can show you how it's done in other cities. And it's possible to do it right now in the short run. You don't have to build anything new. You start to do something different. And so, yes, Alderman Gregory experienced that close up. And I'm happy to meet with anyone to talk about it. But it is the way that's done in Peoria. And I've continued to talk about bringing a group of people to Peoria to see how it works there for permanent supportive housing. I've talked about going to Peoria to see how their coordinated entry system works. I've talked about going to Peoria to see how the PATH team works. I've talked about going to Peoria to show how Medicaid works. And that the continuing method continues to reduce the amount of services available from federal resources. So I want to see those practices change. And I've wanted to see that for a while. And as Alderman Gregory said. And I've wanted to see that for a while. And, uh, as Alderman Gregory said, in order to do that, I have to be able to talk to all of the primary agencies. And not all primary agencies want to talk about it. They're content with what they've done up until now. Some are wanting to make some changes, but long-term, very quickly, uh, Springfield as a city is the only continuum that has continued to lose money because they've been doing it. There's a short-term answer, will be the same as the long-term answer.
But with regards to garbage, I know they're picking, we'll have to verify, I'll nate check on it, but they're picking up three times a week over there, so. I know John's helped, the tents were sprawled out, helped move them more, uh, consolidated, but, uh, I think the other items are getting a handle on it. Key component, we'll have the police going over there with the Continuum of Care agencies to, um, find out who's all there. I mean, that's the point of entry. That's where it starts, one person at a time.
Alderman Donlin.
John, you, uh, uh, alluded to the winter warming center opening up in early November. Who, what, what agency is going to staff that this year?
I'm gonna leave that to the Alderman, to, or to the mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, um, we're in discussions with Salvation Army, um, but nothing's finalized yet. You know, of course, they were the ones last year, we asked the continuum to a certain degree to see who'd be interested, but uh, they seemed to be interested in helping out in that degree.
Thank you.
And that, him having said that means I didn't come here till now because I was working, helping them work out a budget.
And that is in conjunction with the, the Continuum of Care. You know, before they were, last year, it's kind of like out on their own. This time, they're working with all the agencies to have that entry point, because you have all the individuals right there, so you can assess their situation, uh, when you do have them in front.
Alderwoman Turner.
So where, where is it gonna be located?
Well, uh, that's to be determined, uh, with regards to that, so. We should have an announcement. I want to verify with them if they're comfortable with location. Uh, so we should have that hopefully later this week. Or next week.
Cause I, cause I, I thought there was a concern about with COVID, the number of people that would be able to be served in the location that was used last year, because they can't put as many people in there as was last year, so I thought that was a concern.
Yeah, we're looking at a larger space. Uh, one of them, of course, is the ARC, which is on the docket, I believe, for First Reading. It's part of the rail project we have to purchase, so that's a, a potential larger space that could render that uh, useful in that capacity. That's the Adult Rehabilitation Center on Eleventh Street, I believe.
So would there be, um, would there be a lot of rehab that would have to happen before they could, we could use it?
Uh, that's what we'd have to check. Currently, it's, uh, being used as that type of, uh, shelter.
Okay, I thought it was vacant. I thought it was vacant.
Uh, they are in the process of moving individuals out, uh, because, uh, there's two Salvation Armies. They're under one umbrella, the ones that are the Kettle, you know, with the Christmas time, that's the one out at uh, the Clear Lake, uh, facility. The one on, um, the rehab center is with the resale shop. Well, resale, uh, on retail, uh, for Salvation Armies, they've been hit with COVID, and they've, um, they're restructuring, uh, their services, so that's, uh, since the rail's taking up uh, that particular facility. They're looking at, uh, either continuing the services as far as resale at another location. Uh, they do have a, I think, one currently at Wabash, but, uh, looking at providing their kind of, uh, rehab services uh, in partnership with the other Salvation Army. And so, at the facility, we are purchasing it, or it's on the docket with regards to the rail project. So that facility would be available in that manner.
Alderwoman Conley.
Just want to be sure, um, if we were to use that Salvation Army facility, that would be a short-term sort of a shelter situation for the wintertime, and, and that would not require any zoning changes?
I'd leave that up to Corporation Council with regards to that.
The, the Eleventh Street Salvation Army location is, uh, properly zoned for those uses. It's being used that way now. It's got a rehabilitation, um, may not use the correct, uh, terminology, but they have a current, um, residential rehabilitation program going and have had for, you know, years and years and years.
And, and how long, um, will that building be standing before it needs to be taken down for the rail project?
It, it may not actually ever have to be taken down right on Eleventh Street, the, and you're talking two or three years, just on the backside, correct, where the warehouse is.
That's correct. Uh, I believe we were shooting for a March of 2022 letting, so we wouldn't have to demo it until after, after, after that season, a couple of months after that. However, with that being said, the building can stay. We would just have to do some modifications to the boiler uh, that's in the other portion, uh, where the, where the warehouse is in order to retrofit the building, as well as some utility work.
But that's in conjunction at a time of demolition.
That's correct, which we do not need to demolish until 2022. We give it to the winter, winter of 21, 2022.
Thank you.
Any other questions? More discussion? Is there anybody else wish to address the council? Motion for adjournment?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.
You can't say that.
I know. You're teaching me a lesson.